Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 5th, 2022 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have each of you with us tonight. At this time, Ms. La Magna will review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comment and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please be clear to the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by foreshouting or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order refused to obey in a ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the election or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the December 1st, 2021 Regular City Commission Meeting of the...
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Cantu. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. At this time, we will address our agenda. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, item number 6A, you will present, the mayor will present the proclamation to the Daytona Beach Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, continue item number 9A, the Daytona Beach LPGA 711 PD Agreement from the agenda until the February 2nd, commission meeting at the request of the applicant. Change item number 110I to Peabody Auditorium Advisory Board Appointment to one appointment for Zone 6 only. That concludes the changes for tonight's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Excuse me?
Move to approve the agenda as corrected.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger as the corrected minutes and a second from Commissioner Reed. There are no further questions. We'll take the motion. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
We'll move on to item number six, which are presentations, and item number 6A is a presentation to the Daytona Beach Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. And Mayor Henry will present the proclamation.
I was, I was, I was, ladies, if you would stand, I was going to call for the president, but I forgot that she was among us. And at this time, I don't know of anyone in the city who's wearing more hats of significance than your president. She is burning the candle at every end, and she is one that I know you all are proud of. But we are proud of her as well and appreciative of her great work with us. So, the city of Daytona Beach, the world's most famous beach, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Daytona Beach Chapter. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded in 1913 at Howard University by a group of 22 women. My wife is number 22 on her line, by the way. Their goal was to use their collective strength to promote excellence and to assist where there is need. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a private, nonprofit organization whose purpose is to aid and support through established programs in local communities throughout the world. And whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is the largest African-American Greek-lettered sorority in the world, having established over 1,000 chapters with a sisterhood of more than 300,000, currently located in the United States, England, Japan, the Republic of Korea, Germany, Jamaica, the Virgin Islands, Bermuda, and the Bahamas. And whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated chartered the Gamma Zeta Sigma Chapter in Daytona Beach, Florida in 1946, sororas responsible for forming this chapter were, for the most part, professors at the Great Bethune-Cookman College and instructors in the public school system of Volusia County. These charter members were inspired by sorority Mary McLeod Bethune's leadership as president of Bethune-Cookman and her work in the community through the founding of the National Council of Negro Women. Her motivating force encouraged the five charter members to provide services and programs that promoted human welfare within Volusia County. Whereas in 1960, Grand Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated changed the names of graduate chapters from the Greek name to the name of the city or the geographic area where the chapters were located. Thus, Gamma Zeta Sigma Chapter became the Daytona Beach Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated uses the five-point thrust as an organizational structure as it creates programs to benefit their respective communities: economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. Whereas the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Daytona Beach Chapter is celebrating 75-plus-one years of outstanding and committed service and invaluable work in the greater Daytona Beach community. Now, therefore, I, Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of the City of Daytona Beach, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proudly proclaim January 5th, 2021, in the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, as Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated date. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the great city of Daytona Beach, Florida, to be affixed this fifth day of January 2022. Thank you.
I'm gonna take a picture, but I am gonna say a few words. First of all, thank you to the mayor, commission, and manager for acknowledging the 75-plus-one years of service for the greater Daytona Beach area. I just wanted to kind of just share with you just briefly some of the things we've done under that five-point programmatic thrust. For the economic development, we do a financial 42 workshop to help citizens learn how to, you know, use their money, businesses, how to best handle their funds. Educational development and awareness, we have given out approximately $500,000 in scholarships to high school graduates in the Daytona Beach area. We're adding a single mom scholarship. We're adding a trade school scholarship, and we're adding a first-generation scholarship this year. We've already voted on that. We have an educational boot camp that's happening on the 22nd of this month, the virtual boot camp college prep for our high school students for math and for English and for preparing their applications and all that comes with that. Institutional, I'm sorry, international awareness and involvement, we've assisted with national disasters. When the hurricanes were in the Bahamas, you saw us in the paper where we gathered up the community and we did what we did for the Bahamas. We also supported a Haiti drive for school supplies just a couple of months ago. And then we supported a STEM program in Senegal, Africa, that came through one of my students in Embry-Riddle. Physical and mental health, supporting the mayor's fitness challenge as a Delta team. Breast cancer walk, supporting. Lupus walk, because we had a member that had that disease. Political awareness and involvement, definitely voter registration, workshop for felons to get back on track, and also a public video for school disparities for girls. If I were to say Barbara Jordan, Shirley Chisholm, Marsha Fudge, our current Secretary of HUD, of Housing, Alexis Herman, Aretha Franklin, Angela Bassett, Keisha Knight Pullman, Cicely Tyson, and Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, you know some note of adults. This evening, we are proud to stand before you as the Daytona Beach Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and we shall continue to continue the service that we've begun. We're not going anywhere, and you will continue to see us, and we thank you for recognizing what we've done as well as we shall do. So maybe we have a picture, Mr. Mayor?
Tell Jim to move. No. Jim, Jim. Tell him to move.
Oh.
Tell him to move.
Don't come down too far.
Tell him to move.
Tell Jim, it's a man. What do men do with their ass down? It's a man in the room.
Okay.
Okay.
Come on, put the mirror in your face.
You're good.
Soras, come on, we're on a double roll.
Mayor and...
Mr. Mayor, if you'll come up here with me, please. Don't let the mayor get my baby. First time Soror here, he's not here, we're taking a picture.
Yes. All the short people in the front.
One, two, three, right here. One, two, three.
I want the manager to say one, two, three, Soras.
One, two, three. One, two, three. If he's not supposed to be here, he obviously is face-to-face, so please make sure they know.
And Mr. Mayor, as you prepare to return to the dais, let me also say that in City Hall, we have deltas working. Assistant City Manager Betty Goodman, Paula Long, Rose Askew, and Kay Brown. Delta's on the job.
All right.
Thank you, Soras.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 6B, which is the Development and Administrative Services WGI, Inc., redistricting presentation. This presentation is an opportunity for the commission to hear what they can expect with the process and ask questions of WGI about redistricting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, an honor to be here. My name's Al Hill. I'm the Geographic Information Systems Manager for WGI's Orlando office, and I'm here to talk to you about your redistricting initiative. Our offices are located nationwide, but this entire project will be run out of the Orlando office. As you're probably aware, if you've read the newspapers anytime in the last five months or so, redistricting is a process whereby every 10 years, populations of electoral zones whose representatives are single, are elected by zone, single districts, must be looked at, make sure that the populations within those zones are equitable based on the current decennial census. So that's what this process is all about. Every 10 years, we have to look at populations by zone. This is governed by the U.S. Constitution, the Florida Constitution, and your city charter. Your code of ordinances provides that you look at your zone boundaries anytime there's an annexation or when there's a decennial census. You also have the ability, according to your ordinance, to modify these boundaries at your desire, which is really quite interesting compared to some of the other ordinances that I've seen. This redistricting needs to be done so that it's fair, nonpartisan, and it meets all the regulations of these state and local ordinances, and that it matches the requirements of the Voting Rights Act. So the U.S. Census released their data late this year, which was unfortunate for some of us. It was released in August of 2020. It should have been released about three months prior to that. Your population rose approximately 20% between the 2010 census and the 2020 census. So if we divide that number by six, come up with an ideal population for each district, that's roughly 12,119. So to do this, the census provides us three levels of geography. If you're unaware of the way the census collects data, the largest geography that the census uses is something called a census tract. Then those tracts are further broken down into block groups. This provides planning staffs and various unsungary governmental agencies to look at data at different levels. For redistricting, we look at census geography at the block level. You can think of a block as a typical city block. Both the city and the county have worked very hard with the census over the last 10 years to make this census as accurate as possible. The census geography has been improved immensely in the last 10 years so that it fits boundaries that we recognize on the ground, such as streets, much better than it did 10 years ago. And the local updated census address initiative that was undertaken by the county and the city ensured that everyone in the city was going to get counted this year based on residential growth. As I pointed out earlier, a block, a census block, is the smallest unit of collection that the U.S. Census uses. It's usually bounded by visible features: roads, water features, things of that nature, city boundaries. But sometimes those boundaries are invisible on the ground. A municipal boundary, for instance, might not be obvious if you were trying to identify it in, say, an aerial photo. And unfortunately, census geography, even with all the efforts over the last few years, don't always match local municipal boundaries. There's a number of census blocks that are split by your municipal boundary that will have to be investigated to identify where the population in those blocks actually fall. So the census geography, then, is the key, right? Given the ideal total population, the number per district has been identified. New commission zone boundaries will follow these census blocks so that an appropriate legal description can be generated. And these census blocks will be used to redraw proposed zone lines to ensure that each zone's population is as equal and equitable as possible. So currently, what's showing are the current commission zone boundaries with the estimated 2020 census population values. You'll notice that a couple of them are well below that 12,119 ideal limit, where a couple of them are significantly higher than that. That's based on population change in the city over the last 10 years. So we will need to address those population numbers to try to get them as close as possible if your guidance is to do that. So there's a number of important decisions that have to be, have to be made. We must be provided the residences of your current elected officials so that we can identify those census blocks that they fall into so that they will stay in their district, right? Census geography will be locked to the current district. You will remain in your zone. No two of you will be in the same zone. Populations for each zone should be within plus or minus 1% if possible. But again, there can be exceptions. Depending on what those exceptions are, they might require some sort of a legal discussion to justify them. Zones should be compact and contiguous. In looking at your municipal boundary, you've got portions of your city that are not contiguous, but that is still allowed under the current rules. As reasonably practical and legally permissible, create zones that preserve concentrations of minority populations so that they're not diluted. Zone boundaries, as I mentioned earlier, should be nonpartisan. And as reasonably practical and legally permissible, create zones that preserve communities of interest. Now, a question I'm often posed is what exactly is a community of interest? Well, it's any geographically connected population that shares some sort of common social or economic interest. Some examples might be major neighborhoods with HOAs. College and university campuses should remain in the same zone. This could affect things like CRAs, or if you desire even municipal service boundaries. And again, this could include geographically compact or contiguous populations of minorities and ethnic backgrounds. So I have looked at the ethnic population distribution based on the released census data, and what you're seeing is a map of Black and African-American-only population concentrations as a percentage of the block population. So this is an issue that we will take into serious consideration when we come up with the potential boundaries. Same thing for Hispanic populations. Now, one thing that we need to be considerate of is even though a block shows, say, 100% of an ethnic population, some of these blocks are very large, and the ethnic population might be three people. So in looking at these two graphics, we have to be cognizant of the fact that not only are there ethnic concentrations, but what those numbers actually entail for a total So a policy question for you to consider: Should districts intentionally be overpopulated or underpopulated within the deviations allowed, which can be up to roughly 10%, by law, to account for expected population changes over the next decade? Or should they be drawn to approximate that population equity, plus or minus 1%? Or 12,119 people per zone? My recommendation would be plus or minus 1%, but it is a decision for you all to...
Why do you recommend plus or...?
It's equitable at this time. It's easy to justify. The economy could change, and anticipated residential growth could stop in certain areas. It's, it's what I've always done, I'll put it that way. I've done three-county redistrictings and a city redistricting to this point. It shows how old I am. Say that. And we always strove for plus or minus a percent unless there was some really strong reason to vary a little bit off of that in one particular area. Should the proposed redistricting plans attempt to preserve the core of existing zones to minimize voter confusion? And should the proposed redistricting plans, as reasonably and legally practical, keep together communities of interest as are identified by your planning staffs or perhaps by members of the local community or yourselves? What sort of public participation methods should we look at? Upon approval of the commission, we would like to post a web-based survey to gather citizens' concerns regarding the proposed redistricting maps that we generate. We would like to use the city's website to create and post a web presence explaining the city's approach to this process and a place to exhibit draft plans to the public. Upon your approval, post a web-based survey to ideally support, identify support or opposition to a proposed redistricting plan or alternative. So the census data was delivered in August. The Volusia County Supervisor of Elections has requested the city accomplish her efforts roughly by the end of March. April, May 2022 is a deadline to select and approve a plan. We can provide information earlier than that. If we're given guidance on how you would like to approach this, we can provide two draft plans based on equitable populations for review for your February 16th commission. If we're going to have public input to that, that means we'll have to stand up a web presence and have these plans at least a couple of weeks earlier than that, which is a fairly advanced timeframe. Given that your preference for one or the other is determined at that meeting, but that you might have minor tweaks or modifications that you'd like to have made, we can have those available for review at your March 2nd commission meeting. Should one of or the other of them be approved at your February 16th meeting, we can have the census geography legal information available for an ordinance and map products and data layers available for your planning staffs by that March 2nd meeting. So this is a fairly fast timeframe. We will dedicate a staff member to this project to get it done. And again, things to consider: Ideal population, or modify the population requirement for particular zone based on planned growth, and we want to include public participation in the method that we've suggested. My contact information is here. If any of you have questions or comments separate from this meeting, I'm open to that type of communication, or members of the public, if they would like to communicate with me that way, that also is available, and I will say that I'll open it to questions.
Let me ask, and maybe this is a question for you or both of you.
And the microphone.
Do we, do we have to have this in place for this next election cycle, or can it be postponed until the next election cycle?
I can answer part of it, and part of it is based on a request by the supervisor of elections with the county. So the city actually doesn't have a deadline built into its charter, and there's no statutory deadline with regard to the city. There are statutory deadlines with regard to the legislature and the county for redistricting, but those don't apply to the city. So, as Tisha's pointing, our charter does have a requirement that we adopt it within...
Two months.
Two months of the election.
Of an election.
So that's our only concern in terms of when we adopt, but there's no outside deadline beyond that. Now, the supervisor of elections has asked that we adopt our redistricting by March in order so that it could be effective for the November election. So if you want it to be effective for November, you need to adopt it by March.
We don't have an election in November.
Yes, we do.
It's November.
Yes. We have one, three, and five.
So, okay, I was thinking it's next year. Okay. So... Okay. So we can push it back beyond this election then.
You could without violating the law.
Without violating the law. Yeah, I, I personally would prefer that. But that's not just my call. But I, I think this, this is really a quick turnaround in the people who are, you, you, people sort of know which zone they're sort of representing. If you change it this quickly, I just don't think it's enough time for people to be as educated as I would think that they should be. But that's my position.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
I confirm.
Okay.
Okay.
But what I stand about to say is it has to be done two months prior to the election.
That's correct.
Is that the general or the...
That's required, uh, by your charter.
It doesn't specify whether it's the primary or the general, but we treat our primary as an election, so we would have... And qualifying is in June, so we wouldn't want to qualify someone outside of where they can actually run if it got changed.
If I could point out that the lines that you decide upon will affect election precinct boundaries and the supervisor of elections, in order to prepare ballots, will need to know where those lines are.
So, I mean, I may think we've, we have four people that want to do it in the way that I'm suggesting.
We agree with you.
Yeah.
Why don't we take it to a motion then? And we'll have to hold a comment to move the deadlines out so that there's no confusions to the, for the direction of your consultant.
All right.
I'd like to make it as easy on the voting public as possible, too, that they don't go to the wrong precincts and maybe just decide not to vote because it's too confusing. That's my concern.
Okay. So do we have a, do we have a motion?
I think Commissioner Reed...
Can we have a, give me a timeframe you're talking about?
Good. So, if I could have the consultant step up again? So, because obviously you need a timeframe as well to work within, and, and so now we won't be trying to make the November election cycle for this year. The next election cycle is the following November, I presume?
Is 2024.
2024.
So if it was approved in 2023, then...
So, um, so obviously timing is not a significant issue. I think the motion would be then, um, not to attempt to meet the supervisor of elections' deadline in November and just to proceed, uh, with redistricting, uh, for the 2024 election.
All right. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Uh, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have a comment, Commissioner?
Yeah, I have a question. Exactly what is the motion?
What he said?
He's making a motion. Nobody said what it is.
Well, he explained what it was, but essentially it is to, uh, have the boundaries redrawn for the 2024 election. So it will not impact the 2022 election.
So let me ask this. We're doing this because we're saying that it's such a quick turnaround. Because in 2024, there'd be another election. Are we going to say the same thing then?
No, because we already, we have enough time. Have a lot more time.
So we'll just take our time now and put it together and prepare, and then we'll move on it then.
So what's the, the deadline for the timeframe if we approve the motion to put it off and do it before? I mean, what's going to be the deadline to have it done prior to the 2024 election?
Probably be March 2024.
Yeah. March 2024.
Yeah, but we, we want to have a quicker deadline than that in the same space that we're in now.
Correct.
Exactly.
So it should be 2023. We should have a deadline. So we'll be prepared for anyone that has to run in 2024.
So people would know who's...
Correct.
Yeah, you're giving at least a year.
Correct.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah.
So we could even make it January. You give yourself one year from today.
Well, I wouldn't do it after Christmas. Let's say February of 2023.
I mean, that's, yeah. But it, it, it just gets it done and then you have that much more time.
One of the concerns is population change between now and that date will not be supported by census information, so the population numbers will be extremely difficult to identify. You could potentially come up with...
I don't.
Plans now, and it could be more than the two plans that were in the original RFP, and approve one, but not put it into effect until a later date. That would give people the option of, um, these are where precinct boundaries are going to be, these are who, um, my commissioner is going to be, that sort of thing. So that we can take advantage of census data, which unfortunately, due to growth, becomes rapidly out of date, further away from the collection date taken.
I think I'm fine with February 2023.
That's not to say we can't complete it earlier so that the, the data is more accurate. The sooner we get it done, the more accurate the data, so...
All right, we could generate potential plans that you could advertise and get information from the citizenry about, but just not enact them until a later date.
I think that's what we're saying, that we want to move forward with what it takes to get it done. We're just not going to move on it. Because we need that information in order to make that decision.
And you might annex property between now and then, which would affect these potential boundaries as well.
What I'm hearing you say is that we do need to move forward with your study and to bring that to the commission, uh, for them to adopt as soon as possible. Its effective date, of course, wouldn't be until the 2024 election. Um, so there's no reason to wait until January, uh, to adopt the redistricting. So, and it may in fact, um, cause the data to be skewed if, if you wait that long. So we want, we want to avoid that if possible.
Yes, our, our rapid timeline that I identified earlier was based on what we had been told that you needed to be done by March of this year. A longer date is fine with us. But yes, the longer you get away from the data collection date, the census data, and with the rate of growth, uh, again, your population grew 20% in 10 years. That is a concern.
So we, I, I think we're saying, use the data that we currently have and, uh, use the data that we currently have and enable us to, um, implement this for the 2024, so we'll just postpone it. But the timeline for it to be completed is, is open to me. It can be open as long as it's done prior to, um, March of next, uh, spring. So it enables you to operate according to the parameters that you would like. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Okay. All right. Do you follow the motion, sir?
I, sort of. He, he, he's talking about, uh, the population's going to grow i- if we do it out that far. Even if, the population's going to grow even if we did it tomorrow. So I, I don't understand why he's saying that the population is going to be a problem. The population's going to grow whether we've done this or not, and we're not going to have another census for 10 years. So I'm good with the motion.
Okay. All right. But, but we'll, we'll, you understand...
For February 2023.
Well, the motion is that it would be completed, okay. If you all insist on having it in February 2023, I, I think I understand his logic.
I understand what he's saying, too, but it's not going to matter.
It grows before or after. It's still going to grow.
There's going to be more even after, if we did it sooner.
Okay.
It may mean we just need to include additional data to incorporate the growth in addition to the census. Is that possible?
We could, we could look at things like residential growth and...
Building permits.
Average population per residential unit, uh, if that's something that you wanted to take into account. We could do, actually do that now, based on, uh, growth that's already approved in your system and the number of residential units to try to, um, again, overpopulate or underpopulate a district based on anticipated growth. Uh, if that's something that you wanted to do, work with your planning staff to identify those areas and say that this area is going to get an additional 1,000 residential units, hence the population's going to grow by approximately 2,000 people, and take that into account if that is something that you'd like to do.
I, I think so, and I think we're going to be able to tell you where the growth is happening.
Right.
Yeah, we know.
All right.
Okay. Commissioner May, did you have a question?
I see, so we have a motion and a second, and I'm going to open it up for any public comment for the motion.
All right. We'll, we'll take public comment.
And I have no public comment for the, or, John, do you want...
John Nicholson, 316 North Grandview Avenue.
I'll fill out your form, John. Don't worry.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. So you're saying that, um, the six or 7,000 people that did not get to vote for the last five or six years, it's okay that they don't get to vote for their representative for the next year or so, and that we're going to end up, because, Ken, how many in your zone? 9,000? How many in your zone? 16,000, all right? And that's been for several years. I know Rob Gilliland said that there would be no homes out in Margaritaville for another five years. Well, guess what? They're already there, all right? And as you know, there are apartments going on B-Side. There are apartments going in downtown. We know that the growth is out there. But what you're saying is you don't care about people voting for their representative because you're going to change. You are 2/3 of the city. You're not going to be 2/3 of the city in the future. So the people that are voting are not going to be voting for you in the future. So the representative that they're going to get, they cannot vote for because you haven't zoned them in yet. They will be zoned, but you will...
Okay, that is correct.
No, no.
No. 2024 is when I'm up for reelection.
No, no, no. Okay.
So they will be...
No, no. They're, okay. They're going to be in your zone, but they're going to be zoned for someone who's up for election now. Do you understand? You've got them now, but they will be in a different zone, and you're not going to allow them to vote for their representative. Now, everybody knows that we went through COVID. There's not a soul in this county that does not realize that we went through, uh, COVID. There's not going to be a newspaper that does not print or a radio show that is not going to say that we had COVID and because of COVID, we're going to have to rush this. Now, normally, it was six months, so now it's going to be three months. But you don't want three months, you want a year and three months. That's a huge length of time. So during that time period, the people will grow. We all know what's going to happen in that year that you're waiting. The numbers are going to be astronomical. Those people who are going to be represented for the next 10 years or three years, depending on the vote, are not going to be able to vote for their respective representative for that time period. So the one that votes, whoever, was it one, three, and five? So whoever votes in one will not be able to choose their representative because, Ruth, you're going to have to move. Your, your zone is, has to go. So does yours. At 9,000, it's got to go. So does yours. At 9,000, it's going to change. It has to. So when people vote in your zones, what happens when they're...
Two blocks away.
They're in your zone, but you can't represent them.
All right. Sorry, thank you.
Your time is up, yeah? Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right. We, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any other public comment? All right. I hope everyone understands the motion.
Why don't you restate it so...
I didn't make the motion, but I think I understand it.
Yes, we made the motion for February of 2023. As the deadline to...
As the deadline.
Correct. As the date, sorry.
As the deadline for it to be complete.
As the deadline, correct.
But we'll be working on it up to that date as the deadline for it to be complete.
Yes.
The drop dead deadline.
Complete and, and enacted, okay? All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any other questions from the commission?
No, and this will give the residents more time to transition to a new representative because they're not going to have a lot of time because we have people running right now for office.
That's right.
And I can warn my constituents, you know, your representative might be changing to whoever it is going to be.
And it'll be two years before that happens?
Correct.
This happened when we came in. We've been in office nine years. They changed the lines before we took office. So it happened.
Yeah. All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number seven, which is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And I have one speaker, uh, Mr. John Nicholson.
413 North Grandview. I know I'm, um, not going to go anywhere with this, but, uh, 30 years ago, uh, we talked about the distribution of these zones. 20 years ago, we talked about the disposition of the zones. 10 years ago, we talked about the disposition of the zones, and I'm going to talk about it again, all right? It was allowed that a zone, uh, went from northern Jacksonville to western Orlando, and it was called gerrymandering. It was acceptable back then. Gerrymandering is no longer acceptable. It is not acceptable in the national, the state, or in Volusia County, but it is acceptable in the city of Daytona Beach. We were just told you all can do that. You can gerrymander. The zones that we have are gerrymandered. There is an area that is a, a high priority African-American. We divide it into three parts. There's an area that is bounded by a river and an ocean, by two, uh, city zones or two city boundaries, which has an economic, very viable, very noticeable tourist industry. We divide it into three parts. You're not supposed to do that. But we're going to do that because there's no discussion on it. What was done for political reasons, we're going to continue. We did it the last time, and we're going to do it this time. We're going to gerrymander our zones for political reasons. The last time I was here, I discussed the growth because there was an apartment complex going up just south of Williamson. There had just been homes built in a place called Tuscany. There were three places of Tuscany, this, Tuscany, that, Tuscany, the other thing. The, the boundaries were going to change before we did our zones. So I asked, when we were off, remember there were three zones that were way over, over 1% over? It was four, six, and one. They were over. But I said, okay, when we do this, we know Tuscany's going to grow, so let's put them at the lower end. We know that four is going to grow, so let's put them at the lower end, and it's two, like on the B-Side, they're not going to grow, two and three? Put them at the plus one so that over time, they'll balance each other out, so you won't end up with 8,000 people different because we ended that when George Burton was here. There were 11,000 people different between two zones side by side. We should be smart enough to know that there's growth, and if we could fudge it a little bit, if we know it's going to grow, don't put the most people in that zone. Asking you to consider a lot of things when you look at this later on. Thank you.
Okay. That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Did we? So moved?
No, I was looking for him. So moved? Do we have a motion? Do I have a second? We have a motion from Commissioner Reed, and we have a second from Commissioner Strickland. Uh, all those in favor of the consent agenda, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Commissioner King two is, is...
Oh, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearings, which is item number nine. Item number nine A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Daytona Beach LPJA 711 Plan Development Agreement. This is an ordinance on second reading, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to Rezone 2.3 Plus or Minus Acres of Property located at 2100 LPJA Boulevard from PDG Plan Development General... from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General approving the Daytona Beach LPJA 711 Plan Development Agreement, authorizing use of the property as a convenience store with fueling facilities and a car wash, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement. And on behalf of the applicant, they've requested that this item be continued until the February 2nd, 2022 regular City Commission meeting.
Motion to continue.
Second.
We have a motion. I'm not sure who the second was. The motion was Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Cantu was the second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Well, now move on to item 9B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Reserve at LPJA Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida Statute, amending the future land use map designation of 90-plus acres of property generally located approximately 3,600 feet northwest of the intersection of West International Speedway Boulevard and LPJA Boulevard from low-intensity urban to Level 1 residential, amending the future land use element Neighborhood V development policy to reduce maximum permitted residential density of the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of offices in conflict with and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Reed.
I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions and no other speakers besides that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and no questions of Mr. Merrill. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Now move on to item 9C, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Reserve at LPJA Rezoning to Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 90-plus or minus acres of property generally located approximately 3,600 feet northwest of the intersection of West International Speedway Boulevard and LPJA Boulevard from PDG Plan Development General and Volusia County A2 Rural Agriculture to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Reserve at LPJA Plan District Agreement, authorizing use of the property to allow multifamily development with a maximum of 560 residential units, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of offices in conflict with and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Cantu.
And again, I have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions and no other speakers.
And no questions?
I have a question for Mr. Merrill.
While Mr. Merrill's coming and Ken is preparing a question.
You're welcome, Rob. How long has this property been zoned, rural agricultural?
I think that was a county holding category, Ken. So a lot of times, this is consolidated property. So annexed into the city and it, you know, never got zoned. So it's very common. So we've had a lot of projects that had county zoning continued. They were annexed, usually got comp plan designation, but no zoning until somebody came along to build something.
So for the last, say, 25 or 30 years, they've been paying agricultural taxes on this land?
Yeah, so zoning does not dictate taxes. Actual use does. I'm not a tax lawyer, but I know that much about it.
Okay. My thing is, it's been sitting there for a long time, not paying any taxes, and all of a sudden, today, we're going to change the zoning on it, and it's going to start paying taxes. That seems like a good idea.
I like that idea.
But I think the bad idea was to leave it as agricultural property for 30 years. But that's in the past. We can't change it now, but we need to look at that in the future, I think.
So I would let Mr. Jagger opine on that, but I can tell you that my interpretation of the code, of the law about that is it's the actual use, Ken, not the zoning that dictates the exemption.
You throw a couple of cows per acre out there and you...
Yeah, I don't know about that. I think this property has just been vacant. I don't think they've farmed it or anything, but I'm not sure about that.
All right.
I think you told me that the other day.
Please, it's a private meeting. Yeah? Okay.
I'll stay up here to say thank you.
Well, you can say thank you, I think, because I think this motion, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. The motion carries 7-0. How many units will they build out there? I forgot.
560.
Maximum of 560.
560? Okay. Now...
The gentleman here is to build those units if you want to. I should have done that.
We appreciate you choosing Daytona Beach and to invest in. And this is, not trying to throw a hornet at you, but I do have a remark to this commission. This is 560 homes on LPJA. 560 homes on LPJA. Margaritaville, over 4,000 homes on LPJA. There are already 1,300 homes in LPJA with, I'm not sure what the number that's being developed in there now, but I think it's approved at another 400 or 500. Bayberry has 300 homes, maybe? The Husini property is approved for 1,000 homes. You look at the number of apartments on LPJA. And all of my life, we've all known that LPJA was to be developed. So we waited as a community for that. And I've been saying to this commission for two years that at some point in time, though, because we realize that there is a nebulous plan to expand LPJA, but at best, that's nebulous. Not a firm plan. We don't have a, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a plan. It's not, it's going to happen, but we don't know when. We don't know how long from now. And so I'm saying all of this to say, gentlemen, you're welcome. And I've been a cheerleader for the development of LPJA and the western expansion of Daytona Beach for 10 years. Glad about it. Live in that community. And most of us are happy with, especially the publics. But with most of what has come out in that region because it's expanded our quality of life in Daytona Beach and things that we can do as a community. But, and I've said this for two years, I think we need to have a meeting. And it can't wait any longer. It cannot wait any longer. It should not wait two months because we don't have another, someone else is going to show up down here with 560 more units. And I was on the bridge two weeks ago or just adjacent to the bridge when an emergency vehicle needed to get beyond the bridge. I was there. And I saw the challenge of that. You know, and so, you know, I'm not calling for anything in terms of how we handle it, but I am saying that it's our responsibility, the elected people, to say that we have to do something to slow this growth on this corridor down. It has to be, and we have to make a decision. No one else can make that decision for us because in 10 years, the people are going to look at us. And I don't look at anybody else. They're going to say, you approved all of these developments. And, you know, for the most part, I'm okay with them now, but I don't think in five years, six years from now, I will wake up and say, oh, this is okay. I'm not going to say that. I'm going to wake up and say that, you know, we had, we should have halted it. And I said it two years ago, but this can't wait another two months. So staff, you prepare a meeting with all of the homes that are being developed out there, and you prepare, and if you all agree...
I agree.
Okay, let me finish because I want them to know what we need them to do. We need you to prepare all of the homes that we anticipate that will affect LPJA. We need to know what options we have as a commission to slow down the number of units and cars that will ingress and egress off of LPJA while it's a one-lane road. And you can also give us your best projected proposal as to when LPJA will be widened. Your best, but I mean, I'm kind of aware of what our best is and how much it's going to cost. And our best doesn't show me anything under a decade and maybe longer than that. But do you all agree that that's what we need?
Yes.
And this meeting cannot wait any longer. It's time that it happened. What is this, January 4th?
5th.
5th? First meeting in March. I think we need to have a workshop. Doesn't have to be a meeting. Needs to be a workshop. And we need to come up with some decisions and some ideas about how we are going to address this situation and what is within our legal right to address it. Okay.
Yes, I do agree. There was one thing I didn't bring up, and actually, I totally forgot. I'd just like to have it on the record. The reserve and the preserve, the sidewalk will be built on LPJA. Can we address that, please?
Thank you, Dennis Murzak, Planning Director. The question is whether or not the sidewalks that are fronting on LPJA from property to property line for the development, if it's going to have sidewalks running along LPJA, yes, that's a requirement. So you will see those sidewalks installed in front of LPJA for that section.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'd also like to make sure that we have proposed adequate water and other utilities for the...
Dennis? I'm sorry. And the developer will be paying for both of those sidewalks for both projects, correct? I'd just like to have that on...
Yeah, it's when we do the site plan application, as they do their development itself, they'll be installing the sidewalks with that. It's part of their CO process. They don't get the CO until it's completed.
Thank you. I just wanted it on the record.
Commissioner May?
Could you please define "slow down"?
Well, I'm not going to define anything because I don't want to say what it is. It's something different than what it is. It is moving at lightning speed, and I'm not here to define it for us. I used that term. Didn't want to say what it was, but it, I don't like it. You have to define what "slow down" for what it means for you. It means that, for me, something different than, we've got, need I go further? I neglected to mention Avalon Park. 2,500 more homes. I neglected to mention the number of apartments that are on LPJA. Any of them. None of them are in that scenario. So I'm not here to alarm anyone, but this is our decision. And so I don't want to define anything for anyone. You can, you have to define it for yourself. But it's something different than what we're doing now. And, you know, if you're just okay with just exploding, then we can just, we'll stake that. But I'm not okay with what I'm seeing. I'm, I want to see something different than what we're seeing. I don't know how to do it better, but I'm, I've seen LPJA. I lived that. I've seen that bridge. And that bridge is not going to be a pretty sight in a few years from now. And as I said before, we're the ones who are going to be held accountable. And we're the ones that the public is going to look at. And we cannot simply say that it's all growth is just, you know, perfectly symmetrical with a wonderful world. But what I do believe is that, and we said this, at some point, that faucet had to be turned on. Completely proud of the development as where we are now. But we have to, you know, you know, this term "smart growth" has to, at some point, take on some sort of logic and some form of execution. But at any rate, I digress. I don't want to answer your question or try to define what that means. I think we have to define what it means.
I would like to also be assured that we have adequate water and sewage and other utilities for the proposed and the present populations.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Could they also tell us the impact or any provisions we have for any affordable housing that we think might come in that direction? Given the growth, I'm assuming at some point, there'll be affordable housing units out there to support the growth that's coming. Are we thinking about slowing any of that down? Don't want to use the word "slow down", but looking at that as part of this restricted plan of any sort?
Well, let's just be real. We ain't seen nobody come out there. We have not seen anyone. Let me, my wife may be watching. Make sure that I use proper grammar. We have not seen anyone come out into that region without the, with the exception of a huge subsidized project that we subsidized at the tune of almost $1 million to support, which is, which was a great project. So let's not just throw out affordable housing as if we want to slow down affordable housing. I think that's, that's not anything that we're suggesting.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
But no one has shown up at our doorstep and suggested that they really want to really do affordable housing developments in that region.
I just want to be sure we're understanding terms because the terms are a bit amorphous. So I'm just, I just want to be sure I'm understanding what I should be thinking about in the next few weeks. That's all.
Okay.
The main concern out there is the infrastructure and out there. And right now, they are doing the PDNE, which won't be finished probably till about 2023. Then it will go into design. And then we just got the money for the ride away. We have no money for construction right now. And hopefully, the infrastructure bill that passed, we will get some money. But we are still looking at least five years or more before the road is widened and the bridge. So I do hear what you're saying. I do think we do need to talk about it a little bit more. I do not get a lot of complaints out there with the infrastructure. It's mainly people that don't live out there that complain. The main thing, my complaints I get is the cell phone tower, which we desperately need, and I'm sure you're aware of it because you live in LPJA. But it is something that is alarming because, I mean, for fire rescue, trying to get in their ambulance, and it does need to be looked at.
And I don't get a lot of complaints, and I honestly do not complain a lot about it, but the homes are not online.
Right.
And we have to remember that. We're dealing with the projection of where we're going. So there, but there are complaints, but I don't get a lot. But the other thing I want to be sure to say is that we have to remember that residential development is costly. And at some point in time, you have to pay for residential development. You know, the new development is a boost because it's positive and it seems like a surplus. But at some point in time, all of that comes online. You know, the LPJA, we had to spend, you know, it's been online 20 years now. I forget how much we paid to resurface Champion Boulevard. And then the other one needs to be resurfaced right now. It's in terrible shape. So, and let's also remember this. We can't hire enough police officers. We can't hire enough police officers today to accommodate what we need to service now. I'm calling for 2 o'clock bar closings in part because I think it'll help our police to be less fatigued. That's one of the reasons that I think that that's very important. So we, there's just a lot of issues that come along with growth. And residential, you know, is not as profitable, shall we say, to a community as commercial development, but they kind of feed each other. And you need it, we need it both in that region to turn this faucet on. But we now, we have to try to regulate the faucet to some degree as a commission, and it's our job. Further questions?
Further questions? It seemed like everybody's already asked most of them. So what you're asking for here is the total number of homes and projects that are approved but not completed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can we get a estimate? Can we get an estimate maybe from our Public Works Department as to how much water those projects that have not been completed are going to require in the future? And that's not including anything that hasn't been brought before us. We need to look at that real seriously. And I think, too, when it comes to the water, and I've talked to a few people about this, we should not, under any circumstance, approve any residential developments that are going to come in and level every tree because part of that helps with the recharge. And when you level every tree, take out all the vegetation, and make one retention pond, that doesn't help our aquifer to recharge like it would if we maintained some greenery, some trees, some forest, and that sort of thing. I realize that it's probably easier for them to scout the land for developers to do that and then come in and build and stick a palm tree in each yard. But that's not doing us any good talking about our future, our kids, our grandkids, our great-grandkids, and the people that will live here in the future. We've got to start taking care of what we have instead of just, you know, runaway growth, if you will. We've got to get a grip on it, I think. And most of the people that I talk to about growth says, hey, we got to do something. You can't, we can't keep doing what we're doing. Eventually, we're going to reach a point of no return, and we're going to be in a mess with no way to fix it. Lack of funds being the main thing. Because y'all are very aware that we didn't raise impact fees here for 20 years. And then they raised them a few years ago. And now we're under the restraint if we can raise them, what is it, 12% a year for four years? So we're kind of in a box there with money to pay for what we need to pay for to accommodate all this growth and the growth that we've already had that we didn't have any, get money for to support it when it was being built. You know, I've heard rumors of a workshop or something like that. In the future, a retreat, I think, was another word I heard mentioned. And we need to sit down and get real serious about this because our quality of life is going to get in the swirl in the bottom of the toilet if we don't do something quick.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add something to your list.
Thank you.
I'd like to see a visual of what we've already done. I think we need to just see what that looks like, where everything is placed, as well as, you know, prepare for the future.
Okay, I think some of that is probably in the maps that we had done about a year ago. But the maps need to be retooled, updated, and enhanced. But I think staff is aware of those maps. They did them. But I'll have to sit down and think about. I've looked at them, but I'd like to maybe send you all some notes to see if you can retool those. But yeah, okay.
One more thing. If we have any projects that are in sight, that are coming this way, can we disclose those if we're not under a non-disclosure agreement to be part of this discussion so we'll know more about what we're talking about?
I feel the same way. This was such a, thrown on us. You know, and we're talking about that Amazon project that was unknown largely by the commission, possibly known by some of the staff. But I think if we're going to vote on it, we should be in on it, maybe sworn to secrecy or whatever. But I do think it was very, very bad for the commission to find out at the last moment when probably the staff knew about it, and we didn't. I think we can be trusted to keep a secret.
Bob, you want to address that? Is that a, that's not really a, you know, it's not above my pay grade.
I'm sorry, I can address that briefly. First of all, I would say that I'm not aware of any non-disclosure agreements or requests at this time. So there's no projects that I'm aware of that would be subject to such restrictions. Thank you.
And secondly, I'd point out that the non-disclosure is a right of the developer under Florida law. So they are entitled to make a written request for which the city has to abide by that request. Now, that request is for the redevelopment agency, which in this case is the city commission. So the commission is entitled to have that information, as Commissioner Traeger said, and not disclose it to others. So I'm not sure of what communication was had between staff and commission, but the confidentiality applies to this board and to staff. And it cannot be disclosed to the public under the state law.
I would appreciate if this ever comes around again that the commission knows about it.
I was going to talk about that in Commissioner comments at the end. That's not what we were. It's kind of getting ahead of what we were talking about here.
It's okay. Okay. But I think it's so it's noted that if it's legal, then, but that's for CRA. But is it the same for a commission?
Same for the commission. The commission acts as the development board. So the confidentiality applies to this commission.
So then I guess this commission is saying that they don't want to be in the dark about those in the future.
The only, it doesn't matter to us. It helps the staff. I just think that it will be very important for the attorney to make sure that everyone is aware of the ramifications, that if you say anything, what goes along with those ramifications. And that's why I didn't even communicate that to anybody. I did not even state the name to any staff member because I don't want those staff members to have any ramifications that may cause them problems as well.
So, yes, a deeply serious situation, but I understand.
It is, by the way, a misdemeanor violation to violate the confidentiality. It's a criminal violation.
Okay. When it comes.
You always have the right to vote, no. This isn't the first time something's been held from us. And that was one of my complaints. But if it's the law, it's the law. And that's when we vote, then we determine whether or not we want to do it.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. All right. So we are in agreement and understanding and expectation of what we want to do in the very near future. Okay.
Can that be a part of our retreat? Or you want a separate meeting for that?
No, I think we need to workshop that out.
Specifically for that? Okay.
We had so much other stuff on the retreat about.
You will have a full packet of presentation.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is the Police Department Ordinance Amending City Code, Chapter 110, Wrecker Services: Acceptable Methods of Payment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the City Code of ordinances by adding a new section to Chapter 110 Wrecker Services to provide for acceptable methods of payment for towing and related services performed by wrecker services operating within the city, repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Who is the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Traeger, second. Commissioner Cantu? Or is it Commissioner May? Who is the second? Okay, Commissioner Traeger was the motion. The second was Commissioner Cantu. All right, do we have any questions on this item?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I agree with this 100%. There was something I would like to add in this, if we can. I know, I'm not sure if it's all wreckers, services when you go there, but if you get your car towed on a Friday and you want to pick it up on a Saturday, and they are fully staffed, because I witnessed it myself, bringing one of my employees that her son's car got towed, they would not let him pick it up on the weekend. And it was actually Monday morning. And I do not think it's fair that they would have to wait and pay an extra couple of days and they wanted to pick the vehicle up, like, say, on a Saturday or Sunday, and they're fully staffed. And is there anything that we can do to change that?
Well, if it's the will of the commission, I'll be glad to look into that. I haven't researched that directly, but I'll be glad to do that. And this is first reading. I can bring that to you on second reading.
Absolutely. I'm 100% in agreement with that.
Okay, and maybe even our contracts? Could we change?
Right. So what you've got before you is an amendment to your ordinance which would apply to all wrecker services. So depending on what I find in my research, we could just include this into your ordinance so that all wrecker services, including our contracted wrecker services, would have to comply. Alternatively, if there's some issue, we could amend our contract, and it'd only apply to our contracted involuntary toes. But I got to look at that a little bit and see if there's any legal reason why we couldn't obligate wrecker services to open on a Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Or say 24-hour turnaround when someone's car is towed, that they should be able to have access, you know, within the next 24 hours.
Or perhaps the alternative would be that they couldn't charge for that time. So if they're not open on Saturday, they couldn't charge for a storage fee. So let me look at some options. I'll see what other jurisdictions have done, and I'll report back to you next meeting.
Great, thank you.
You know, ironically, I just saw something on television about this, about the price gouging that towing trucks were doing to make extra money because they allowed people to pay for cash to not tow their cars, to take them off. And I'm totally in agreement with this.
Yes. Yeah, I appreciate staff getting this done so quickly because I have seen and received correspondence that made me livid, you know, from people who visit our community. And this is, I think, just good policy. And I appreciate it. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Do we need to amend the motion, Bob, to include that? Or we can just?
No, we're on first reading. It's been discussed, so it's public knowledge. I'll just bring that back for second reading.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The public hearing is set for January 19th. Okay, moving on to item 10B. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Derby Plaza, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163.3187 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 4.9 plus or minus acres of property generally located east of Derbyshire Road, south of Ninth Street, and north of Eighth Street from Level 1 residential to low-intensity commercial, repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Traeger. Do you have any questions or comments? All right. Motion and a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The public hearing is set for January 19th. Moving on to item 10C. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to 900 North Plan Development General Rezoning. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to 900 North Plan District Agreement to revise conditions applicable to the satellite parking facility located at southwest corner of Jessamine Boulevard and North Atlantic Avenue intersection, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Cantu. Do you have any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The public hearing is set for January 19th. Moving on to item 10D. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Places of Worship Distance Separation. This is a Land Development Code text amendment and ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Land Development Code, Article 5, Section 5.2.1b.13e, to revise specific standards applicable to place of worship, repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do you have any questions or comments? All right, all those.
This is, this is the church distance. Questions?
Red light's blinking. That means turn my mic on. Question, didn't we have a meeting with our current city manager's predecessor at a church on MMB at one time? And it seems to me that most of the people in attendance that night were in favor of decreasing the distance between churches and places that served alcohol to be able to increase business over there and entertainment along MMB. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Did we ever? We decreased it?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, good.
We lifted an ordinance that said you can only be so many feet. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
It was like 700 feet or something? You couldn't have, that's what Dennis.
You took it down?
Yeah, we eliminated that from the Land Development Code.
Okay, so they can do pretty much with alcohol within any distance of a church.
Correct, correct. School, there was a school proximity that kept in place because that's a state requirement. So we follow that state requirement. But the church proximity was taken out of the Land Development Code.
Okay, good.
We did it in response to that meeting in part.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you for updating me.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The public hearing is set for January 19th. Moving on to item 10E. It's City Manager's Office Beautification Tree Advisory Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing two members to the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to serve terms expiring December 31st, 2024, and providing an effective date. terms expiring December 31st, 2024, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint two members to the Beautification Tree Advisory Board. The membership terms of Martha Grimshaw at large and Milverton Robinson, Zone 5, expired on 12/31, and both would like to be reappointed. Commissioner Henry?
Bless your pleasure.
And Mayor Henry?
I too would like to reappoint Martha Grimshaw.
Okay, so Martha Grimshaw and Milverton Robinson were nominated. May we have a motion?
Com- Commissioner?
Second, okay.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to 10F. It's City Manager's Office Code Enforcement Board Appointment Resolution. Resolution appointing two members to the Code Enforcement Board for three-year terms ending August 23, 2024, and providing an effective date.
The membership term of Turner Himes expired, and she would like to be reappointed. Additionally, there is a vacant position, and we've received an application from Catherine Marsh. I mean, we have a nomination to appoint both individuals.
All right, we have a motion. Commissioner Reed, Commissioner May.
May and Reed.
Second from Commissioner Reed. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to 10G. It's the City Manager's Office Leisure Services Advisory Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing two members to the Leisure Services Advisory Board for terms expiring December 31st, 2023, and providing an effective date.
This appointment is to fill vacancies in Zone 2 and at large. We've received an application from Jessica Haley for Zone 2. Commissioner Strickland, what's your pleasure?
Absolutely. Yes, I, I support the nomination of Jessica Haley for Zone 2.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would also like to keep Luke McCoy.
So we've received nominations for Jessica Haley for Zone 2 and Mr. Luke McCoy, Sr., at large. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Take the motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to 10H. It's City Manager's Office Historic Preservation Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing three members to the Historic Preservation Board for three-year terms expiring April 14, 2024, and providing an effective date.
We have openings for an arctic, a representative for Zone 3, and a representative for Zone 5. The viable candidate for arctic is Thomas Makowski. May we have a nomination? For Zone 3, Daniel Harshaw, Commissioner May. And for Zone 5, Richard Sala, Commissioner Henry. Okay. So we have three nominations, Thomas Makowski, Daniel Harshaw, and Richard Sala. May we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Who was the motion?
Reed.
Commissioner Reed and the second.
I think it was Traeger.
Commissioner Traeger. Thank you. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. And motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to 10I. It's City Manager's Office Peabody Auditorium Advisory Board Appointment. This is a resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Peabody Auditorium Advisory Board for a term expiring December 31st, 2025, and provide, providing an effective date.
Yes, this appointment is to reappoint one member for Zone 6, Sandra Shavers. Commissioner Reed?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Sandra Shavers.
May we have the motion?
So moved.
We'll take the motion from Commissioner, who was it? Commissioner Cantu, second from Commissioner Reed. Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number 11, which is our discussion item. It's a Public Works City Commission Discussion of Design Options for Beach Street Phase 2 Streetscape. And, okay. And Parker, if you would just state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission, Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. I'm going to take the lead in kind of making the presentation with the staff today, but we had a, a great workshop, I felt like, with you guys, and then we had a public meeting and got some input. So the agenda item today is, PMA's ready to get busy designing it, and we have a couple decisions we need your help to make. The first one, in the staff report, you see for Mary McLeod-Bethune, there's an option A and an option B. So you may recall, basically, the two options were to narrow the road and provide parallel parking on one side and have five-foot sidewalks. And the other option was to narrow the road and have 11-foot sidewalks on both sides that would give us the ability to put some street trees and other things. So I think maybe we could, Mayor, if you like, talk about Mary McLeod first and then move on to Beach Street.
Sure.
I'm looking for some feedback.
So Mayor McLeod, the question was, is there, there's two different, two questions on the?
Yeah, there, there's two options that, between the staff and, and my company, we've come up with and presented to the commission and the public. One of them is a two-lane road with parallel parking on one side and five-foot sidewalks, which would be the minimum. The other option, and I've got to say it's the one that I like better, is the same-sized two-way street, but you'd have 11-foot walkways on both sides. And, you know, this is kind of a gateway to Beach Street and the statue that's going to be right at the end of MMB.
Yeah, but you get less parking with that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you don't have any parking then. Currently, there's no parking on the street.
Well, there is some, a little bit. What did the citizens say, Parker?
You know, it was kind of a, a mixed, a mixed opinion. There was a lot more discussion on Beach Street than Mary McLeod-Bethune. I do know, one of the things that Hyatt had mentioned was he liked the idea of having nice oak trees to canopy the road, so that got my attention a little bit.
And 11-foot sidewalks is kind of, for a short stretch, it's a beaut, it would give a, you know, a nice feel to, to your walk, and a safe, comfortable feel.
This also kind of connects Midtown to Beach Street, so that's kind of why I like the bigger sidewalks.
And the bigger sidewalks send the message that your journey is important, you know, and I don't know if anybody's going to use that for parking anywhere, really.
But there's only so many spaces anyway, right now, so that might be something we need to think about, providing parking for them. We've got the parking in front of Daisy Stocking Park.
I don't think they can hear you.
Well, my mic is on. Maybe it was this.
Okay.
We've got the parking in front of Daisy Stocking Park, we've got the parking in front of Joe Harris. Maybe some, some, what'd you say?
This is on the other side of Ridgewood.
Oh, from Ridgewood to there?
Yeah.
Where the, where the bus station is.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, go, make it big.
Yeah. Make it big.
Can we move the bus station? Can we move the bus station?
Okay. And I mean, I, I like the wider myself, but.
I think it'd slow traffic down, too.
For a while, okay.
So Mayor, I'm not sure, you know, at the end of this, we have a formal vote, but I think what I'm hearing is the wider sidewalks and no parking. So maybe moving on to the next item, which is Beach Street. We presented three different plans to the commission and the public. Kind of, the basics of them were a angled parking on both sides of Beach Street with no median. And then, due to the right-of-way being narrower than the Phase 1 Beach Street right-of-way, the section, the second option was angled parking on one side, parallel parking on the other, and continue the landscape median down the middle. So there was, I'd say 50/50 feedback-wise on reasons that the median plantings made sense. Things like continuity from Phase 1, things like that came up. One of the differentials, I think, is we've got these mature oak trees now that have been planted in the park, and some of the, the other comments, recalling Jack White, they like not having that extra 10 to 12 feet to get across the street. So you put the median in, you still have one lane on both sides of it. Basically, the pedestrians have a little further to travel. And kind of with the extensive landscaping in the park, you guys will decide, but it isn't just like it was when we did Phase 1. So those are kind of the two options on Beach Street, and there's 80 parking space, maybe 88 parking spaces additional that you gain without the median. So I think it really comes down to probably be a better aesthetic trip with the median. You can see what we did on Phase 1, be similar to that. Or, and this again, I'm going to tell you how I'm leaning. We designed the amphitheater at Manatee Island many, many years ago, really not utilized. Now got the park going, apartments coming in down there. I think there's going to be a lot of events in the park at Manatee Island, and to me, those additional 80-plus spots are going to be really needed. But again, you guys' decision to make on that, which option suits you.
I actually, I took the time to go visit residents along Fairview, Blue Road, Halifax, Main Street, downtown, commercial areas, all in there, and I asked them about the Roundabout. They loved it. They thought it was a great idea. That's off the table right now, apparently, right?
Yeah. There ended up, you know, with the initial concept plans, we began to evaluate what's involved in Roundabout. And at the public meetings, there's Beach Street where it intersects with Fairview. And I got to tell you guys a little story. My dad had rode to his sewer service many years ago. He's been passed away 30-plus years, but his office was right in that corner. So I kind of grew up in that corner of town for a bit. So that complicates the Roundabout. There was discussion about perhaps going to the northwest quadrant, parking lot there, kind of across from the BMW, or not BMW, motorcycle place, maybe get an additional right-of-way, flooding problems at the fishing hole. So I think with the staff's recommendation, in order to get this project across the finish line, stopping just short of the Roundabout is kind of what's being suggested. And then with the next phase of Beach Street, Blue to the north, tackle the Roundabout. But again, kind of up to you guys.
Sure. So that's number one. Number two was, as I was doing my walking through that entire area, getting feedback from the people who'd be impacted, additional parking was definitely something that they wanted. I asked about angled versus parallel. They were comfortable with the angled parking, again, given that we'd be getting the extra spaces there. And just a point of concern, just that you know, was with the flooding that takes place on that corner, some of the concern was, and we've discussed it, that we are making improvements, but the Beach Street, the commercial corridor of Beach Street back there, the impact of all of this to them and their flooding and the residents back there in the uptown area. But definitely the more parking.
Okay.
I prefer angle parking on both sides as well.
Okay.
And the additional parking.
The angled parking is the median option or the no median option?
No, median.
The no median option?
I think that's what I'm hearing so far, is the extra 80-some spots are going to be, you're sacrificing the median. And there's also probably another $1 million in costs for the modules, the lighting and things, if we do the median. So there is additional cost associated with the median.
Parker, what else can we do that's aesthetically pleasing, since we're going to break the continuity of the median? I mean.
Well, I think some of the magic that I'm looking forward to is, you know, first, we're going to go down to two lanes. It's currently four lanes. It'll have F-curb, similar to Phase 1. And then the thought was, on the east side, we have that shell-infused concrete, which I'm real happy with how it's looking and holding up, probably doing that along the park side. And then the pavers on the east side, you know, we kind of set that many years ago when we first did Beach Street. They're very pricey, and so I think the thought is, this part of Beach Street isn't exactly like Phase 1, where you have a lot of restaurants and storefronts. So probably on the west side, also do some kind of a sidewalk treatment, maybe not pavers. Then we're going to have the FPNL standard fixtures, similar to what's on Phase 1 for the lighting. And I think also we'll do plantings, some trees, benches, pots, similar to Phase 1 to kind of tie the two together. But I think you've got, you know, Brown &amp; Brown and these other new projects that are going to be coming in. They have landscape buffers and landscape requirements right next to the right-of-way. And, you know, we've probably got the most gracious landscaping in town going in in the park. I've never seen anything like it, so.
Beautiful.
I think with the park, you, you won't miss it.
Can I ask a question about lighting? So when I run down Beach Street, I've seen a couple of people have issue with the poles. Are the poles going to be the lighting fixtures? Are they going to be in the same spot in the middle of the sidewalk again? Or is that a reason they're in the middle of the sidewalk?
Yeah, there, there, there was a reason in Phase 1 because of existing water line and existing reuse lines. Literally, we had to adjust some of those light locations in the field, because when we dug to put them in, oops, we thought the water line was here, but it's here. So we'll endeavor to put them on one side or the other of the sidewalk, not in the middle.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go backwards? On the widening of the sidewalk on Mary McLeod-Bethune, are you going to do anything, pavers or any kind of design in that?
On the east side or the west side? Are you talking Mary McLeod-Bethune?
I went back. I said I wanted to go backwards. So on the widening of Mary McLeod-Bethune from the?
The thought was to continue with the shell-infused concrete, but we really haven't made any final decisions, but that's the thought on it. Where we kind of tie into Beach Street, you wouldn't see a difference from Mary McLeod going to Beach Street.
Exactly.
And pavers, pavers don't hold their value. Just try to stay away from pavers.
Yeah.
There's a place for them. I mean, I'm thinking Aura Street Park I did for you guys many years ago, along the beach. Those pavers still look great. If you maintain them, they do, but if you ever have to replace them, you never can match the color, so.
And I've even seen stamps in concrete. They stamp concrete, you know, to, to do, to patterns. So you didn't have to be pavers.
Yeah.
Just something decorative.
Parker?
So I think the concurrence is the more site, the more parking spaces.
Let me ask a question, if I may, so we can determine if we need to take a vote. Will you be bringing, bringing back a final plan for approval by the commission, then?
I would say that would be up to the commission, but I think you've seen the plan that I would be bringing back. You've seen both of them. If you'd like me to bring them back, I will. I think my preference would be, let me go design them.
Well, once you complete design, will you bring that back for an approval by the commission?
Yes, we could. I mean, really up to you guys.
But what's the will of the commission? Well, that being the case, we won't need to take a vote, we won't need to take public comment tonight. We can put that off until the final plans are brought forward.
I just want to make sure what I begin to design is what you guys want, and maybe just for me to confirm it. Mary McLeod-Bethune, wider sidewalks, no parking. Beach Street, angled parking on both sides, no median.
Okay, Ms. Ruby, did you want to speak to this matter? I will allow Ms. Ruby to speak.
In that case, Mayor, we should probably let everyone speak that wishes.
Whoever, it's fine. Whoever put up their name. This is too important for people not to speak.
Thank you. Anna Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I have to say, I love the new look up here of the physical plan. I am totally in favor of medians. One of the most ridiculous things I heard when you narrowed the southern section of Beach Street was you could not possibly expect parents with children to cross two lanes of traffic. And now up here, you're going to say, oh, but up there, they can cross two lanes of traffic in either direction. That's safe. The median, the, the difference with and without the median is the same. It's about 68 feet. Aesthetically, 90% of what we're doing here is for aesthetics. Aesthetically, the street will look so much better with a median all the way to Fairview. I find myself astonished that you could consider to angled parking on two-lane streets without a median as something that's comfortable or safe. You could allow parking in the, when it's not being used. You could have parking in the News Journal Center. You could have parking, if you made a deal with the county, on the county tag and title lot, because that's not being used at all now. When that gets developed, maybe there'll be a parking garage. You could have Brown &amp; Brown allow parking in their, their lot when it's not, when they're not in business. You could put parking on City Island and then get a little shuttle, contract with a beep shuttle, to run people around. There are so many options, and you're trying to build an urban walking core, and to put cars on both sides of the street makes it feel like you're just building a fake downtown in the middle of somewhere. I mean, go out to look at what they did out at, one Daytona. They put parallel parking on both sides of the street. They didn't go, oh, let's cram in as much angled parking as we can. This is a mistake to put angled parking for 84 parking spaces. You have options available. I'm not going to even go into the trolley. But there are other things you can do, and aesthetically, this will be so much better with a median strip. You might have to put a cut-through on Michigan so that people going north could turn into the frameworks development. But when you're a pedestrian on the street, you, that median strip makes a huge difference, and it will be much more pleasant. And that's the people you are building this for. People who are willing to walk. So let them walk. Find some other options for parking places. You can do it. The other thing, I had one other point, and I can't remember what it is. I'm done, I guess. Thank you.
Are you sure? Just want to make sure you get your, you get them all up.
Okay, our next speaker is?
Make some compelling points there. Come on, John. Well, why didn't you say that? I don't care what he did that much. Go ahead.
I didn't hear what you said, Mayor.
It wasn't.
Is he asking?
It's, excuse me, we'll come back to that. Go ahead.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I ask you guys to visualize coming from Orange Avenue down Beach Street. Get to the News Journal Center, and what do you see? Asphalt. A big rectangular parking lot. That's what you see. You're being penny-wise pound foolish by cutting Beach Street in half. You will have the business district, which is where all the palm trees are, and you'll have the parking lot for an amphitheater that's hardly ever used, is what I'm hearing. You want those 84 parking, and you're going to destroy the ability to have an enlarged Beach Street. Because once you get past Orange Avenue, it curves. You really don't see it. Because once you get past Orange Avenue, it curves, you really don't see it. You get to the yacht club, it curves, and you don't really have the ability to have those palms going in that direction. It stops dead at Blue Road. The only way to expand downtown, which is what Brown &amp; Brown has done, what these apartments are going to do, is it will go to Fairview. And you will have two different downtowns, a parking lot downtown, and an extremely attractive beach side, I mean, Beach Street. Do you want, because you go to any other city, go to Orlando, and look what they've done with the palms and the trees and whatnot, their downtowns are gorgeous. I like his idea of M&amp;B. When he first proposed that, I did. But it does make an entrance to that statue. With those oak trees and those white sidewalks, it will be impressive. So think of what happens when you go to the end of the Ocean's, the News Journal Center with all those trees, and you end up with a parking lot. It's true, there's a lot of trees in the park now, but look at Brown &amp; Brown, there are no trees, there's a little hedge, big white wall, little hedge, there are no trees on the left-hand side whatsoever. It is a massive, ugly asphalt parking lot, is what you're voting for. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't have anyone else.
Okay, I think we need to go back to the, because I'm hearing some different sentiments, and you all didn't express the last time.
I think he had.
This guy didn't really say anything.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I hate to agree publicly with John Nicholson, but I agree with him. I mean, that's painful, that's painful. But, but he's got a very, very valid point. So if we could, you know, let's go back to the apartments, the apartments will be there. There may have to be a cut-through there at some point to go up Michigan Street. I was told that their entrance to their parking will be off of Michigan, but there's supposed to be a drop-off in front of there also. Whether we do the median or not, and I'm against not doing the median, there's gonna still be a place in front of those apartments for a drop-off, or should be. So I'm for the median, you know, if we're gonna, we could even have a longer Christmas parade, because most of our people sat in the median during the Christmas parade. You remember, we had to stop when we get to ISB, because we don't have a median. That's all.
I think for the sake of consistency and to make it look earlier, we do need a median. You've been somewhere in some towns, you know, all of a sudden, you know when you get from one town to the other, because it's such a stark difference.
Change.
And I think for the sake of consistency, we need to keep it up.
I don't ever want you all to think that I'm trying to push an agenda. You all shouldn't be quiet. I try to have a very open and fair conversation. And all of a sudden, it's just, I wasn't for that, okay. Okay, so that's one, two, three, four. It's a, Parker, this is what they want, okay?
So the direction to Parker?
The only thing I don't, I could care less about the median, the only thing I don't like is angle and then parallel parking. And I've been to West Palm, and they didn't have a media, and I, it was nice, and I did see how both sides were parallel without a media. So, but I guess it really doesn't matter.
I don't like losing eighty-four spaces.
I don't either.
No, I do not like that. I'm not in favor of losing eighty-four spaces, but I do believe that if you're going for beautiful and wow and amazing-looking.
Destination.
And this is the place to come, you know, and, you know, at some point in time, we'll have to find a way with the parking. I hate to say that, but I do believe in, I want Daytona Beach to be an amazing destination everywhere you go, all over the place.
Exactly.
There's no area that I don't want people to say, wow, look where I am. So this is, and I'm not, I'm visually challenged, you know, I just look like this because I have a person who knows how to dress me. Just kidding. But, but I'm challenged when it comes to aesthetics on every front. But, so if this is gonna look better, I'll take you all's opinion for it. Okay, so Parker?
Who, Parker?
There's a change. Okay.
So we ended up with a median and parallel parking for Parker's benefit, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the final plan, we'll come back to the commission for approval at a later date.
Bob, if I could, I think what I heard was, gonna do the median similar to Phase One, which then requires one side be parallel, the other side will be angled.
Thank you.
I got my marching orders.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments?
That was our last item on the agenda.
Okay. All right, we commenced tonight, public, with the commission remarks from the Zone Five Commissioner, Ms. Henry.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Happy New Year, glad to see each and every one of you. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner Traeger?
Well, I said, I said my piece about transparency earlier, and I do really want the commission to be in on it, even if we're sworn to secrecy. And we were talking about the parking and everything, there was an article in the Hometown News about a trolley, which I thought was pretty good, about having a trolley from Port Orange up through the beach side to Ormond, going over to Beach Street and making, you know, like a circle. And I thought that would be pretty good for somebody who comes into town and maybe doesn't want to drive around a unfamiliar city, they could hop on the trolley and go to the major points. Or maybe a residence, maybe they didn't want to take their car. And it would be probably a scenic thing, so I think maybe we ought to consider that. I don't know the cost on it, but we could maybe crunch the numbers and see if that would be feasible. I think we did have something like that at one time. And other than that, Happy New Year to everybody. And, oh, another thing with the ethics thing, I think we ought to give the board members maybe a, a letter or something about what is their board is all about, and maybe what their duties or responsibilities are, so they don't have to come in cold. Happy New Year.
Commissioner Strickland?
I have three things. I hope they don't take too long. Commissioner Traeger brought up the non-disclosures. I would like to know if anybody sitting up here has the desire or the motivation to stop doing business with, with private entities that, that want a non-disclosure, or if we do non-disclosures, that it can't come on our agenda before this body without a two-week period for it to be disclosed to the residents and give us feedback about that, since we've stated we want to hear from our residents, and we want to represent our residents, and we can't do that fairly if we don't, if they don't have that information. I think that voting yes, voting for that, that little thing the other night makes us look very weak as a representative body that we were manipulated by outside entity. And does anybody have what it takes to say, we changed that? I guess not.
Well, I just want to make sure that I state this, I don't, I don't feel weak about my decision. I didn't feel I might see a few people on the radio who think you feel weak, but I have a cell phone, our meetings are public, you know, that situation was, you know, was almost a blind mule to me, could see what that was, if you looked at it, you know, a blind mule could look and see that that was Amazon. That's just my opinion, it wasn't something that was so, it was, they did have a non-disclosure, it's folks' right to, to do that. I don't even know if that's legal for us to do that, you'd have to question that, but I just want to make sure that, you know, I was comfortable with the decision that I made, and I was also comfortable with hearing from residents. We meet every two weeks. This was on the agenda, and you knew that this was coming, so if you wanted to come down and talk to us about it that night, you could have. So I don't, you know, I don't want to make a knee-jerk reaction because certain people had certain feelings about how we might have appeared. But I've been up here long enough not to allow the winds of, of the community to shape me either in that way. I want to be shaped by people, but I'm not gonna be blown over because I make a decision that people don't necessarily agree with. But tell us if that's...
I think you probably, I haven't researched this, you know, my, my sense is, you could probably establish a policy that would allow you to not consider a proposal that's, that isn't public. So I think you could do that. And then, of course, as Commissioner Reed said, you can always vote no pursuant to that policy, or you could ignore that policy when the time came, so. But I think that's within your discretion to establish policies to what you'll consider.
But I'm also willing to discuss that, if that's reasonable.
Sure.
You know, I'm willing to, if you want to bring forth a policy, because I think you all really don't like the non-disclosure, and if you don't like it enough, and it's something that you, we feel strongly enough about that you want to implement something, I'm cool with that also.
I understand that we probably have to, in certain circumstances, not sign a non-disclosure. I, I do think that, that the commissioners should be included in knowing what's going on. I mean, we have staff that are aware of it, we should be, as a representative body of the residents, should be aware of it. And, you know, even if, if that's necessary, I'm fine with that, but I do think that we as a governing body owe it to our people that we represent, to give them a couple of weeks to look at it and give us feedback, once it's, before it's ever put on the agenda for a vote. Whether it makes us look weak, whether it makes, whatever it makes us look, our residents deserve to know what we're voting on. You know, before we vote on it. So if, if, you know, if we can get any traction with that, great, if we can't, you know, majority rules.
I think you might be able to get some traction with it, he can bring something back with you guys and talk about it.
Don't we have the option when it comes before us to say, well, we don't, we just found out about this disclosure, and we need more time?
Yes, of course, you always have that option. You could move to continue it, if it came forward, you could always move to continue the item as well, once the disclosure occurs.
Listening to Commissioner Strickland, I think that it is a benefit for, for staff, I'll just be honest. So if you all want us to bring back a policy, it allows for us to communicate to individuals that want to present that to us, to say, hey, there will be a presentation at the first meeting of the month, then the second meeting will be when we put it on the agenda for a vote. That would allow for, you ought to have two weeks, based on what Commissioner Strickland, so we could put a policy in place, and it does help staff, because we don't want to be considered the bad guys, that we're holding something from our elected officials, that's not our desire. So we would, we could actually, if you, if you want that to be the policy as a commission, we will bring that back, and it will be something that I could support as a city manager, because it makes sure that my staff are not put on the back burner of being someone trying to hold something from the elected officials.
But the policy is already now that you have to tell us anyway.
But it's at the, the, the meeting of the voting. So we're, you're saying as a commission, that prior to it being brought back for a vote, that at least, if I'm hearing Commissioner Strickland right, at least two weeks before the vote, the presentation will take place, so if Derek has a company, I will make a presentation, the following commission meeting, it will be on the agenda for action.
Okay. That's fair, I think that's fair. I don't have a problem with it, because I'm, because I'm not so hell-bent on supporting their secrecy to, you know.
Right.
You know, not making our residents feel comfortable either, I'm not, you know, it's, you know, this, we work for the public. So if you can...
We'll draft a resolution to that effect for your consideration at an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Number two, Mr. Manager, could you tell us the result of your research on the Halifax River access that the gentlemen were here last time?
Yes, if you, in your inbox emails, we did forward a message from the Cop Cole, the property owners adjacent to the property that we as a city vacated, they have no desire to turn the property back over to the city of Daytona Beach. The question has to be made amongst the commissioners, do you want our legal department to pursue trying to get that property back, or look at other areas on the Halifax River that we can provide access for the residents of the community? And that's the thing that we have, but the, the property owners have no desire to vacate the vacation we vacated.
Can, can I say something else about that? You know, sometimes we, we think about vacating property or, or turning over city assets to private individuals, developer, whatever, and, you know, we did this during COVID. I remember during COVID, sitting out in the wind and the rain on the front out there, I'm sure that at that time that that was done, we didn't have a lot of people in here, a lot of people weren't on, on, on the ball with that. We weren't, or at least I wasn't, at the time that it happened. But you can see, when we give away an asset, and we're talking about taking it back, it didn't, we gave it away for free, but now it has a value. So we need to consider in the future that if we're gonna give something away or vacate something, it has value, you know? Now, we don't know what the value is, if we go to court, you know, it's gonna bring out all kinds of other stuff. I personally am for going, am for going to court, because we gave something away that we shouldn't have given away. And whatever it costs to get it back, we should get it back, and remember that in the future, that, that some things are priceless, you know? That little piece of property is priceless, though, as far as getting it back. And so I didn't ask those folks to do that, I want you to know.
It's all right.
But anyway, if anybody's got the heart for it, let's take it back.
Well, I've already had the heart for it for two, three months, because I think we should take, try to take it back. I've said that, and I think we should try to take it back.
We pay their attorney's fees, we gotta pay our attorney's fees, but I don't think we should pay them for the property, because they didn't pay for it in the first place. I mean, you know, it didn't have any value, obviously, when we gave it to them.
And I don't, you know, you'd have to opine on this, Bob, but I don't feel as though, if it didn't have any value, then how could they argue that it now has so much value that we should have to pay them to take it back?
Well, it's a matter of process, so there's only one way to vacate right-of-way, it's a statutory process, and, and by law, when you vacate the right-of-way, the title passes to the neighboring properties. So that happens as a matter of law. Now that the title is passed to them, and you're, you're looking to acquire that property back as park or river access, you've got to do that through eminent domain, and then through the eminent domain process, a different process, you have to establish a fair market value, you've got to establish necessity, you've got to pay for attorney's fees and experts, and the court then adjudicates that value, which is paid to those landowners. In this case, it would likely be an easement value, so it wouldn't be the full value of the property, and we're talking about a relatively small strip. So the property itself won't be that much money, in my opinion, but your other cost may be substantial, paying for attorney's fees and experts in order to make that occur.
Okay, well, I think, you know where Ken and I kind of stand, I felt that we need to investigate this and come back with a suggestion of what it might cost, and then, I don't know how the rest of you feel, if you've seen this property, from my perspective, it's just a mistake on our part. And while we vacate, you know, I don't want to say hundreds, but certainly a lot of properties, this is a standard procedure that we... This is a, a standard procedure that we go through as a city. And this is the first time that I've ever regretted that process. And you accept the recommendation of your staff, but I don't feel that we were given what I view as a good recommendation in hindsight. And sometimes things that you have to pay more for something than it might be worth in a broader context to make something right. But it also does have a benefit to the public. And that's something that I don't think we can overstate, or that has not really been stated. And when you go there, it's not just the people who live on those plats who have a right to go down there. It's the people who live adjacent to the streets that may be the next, may be one plat missing, 10 plats missing, 50 plats missing, or where I live, or where you live. But we don't have a right to go there, no. And so, and this, this idea that the property owners are not given, that there are people back there, you know, that didn't fly with me. The letter that I received, or the correspondence that stated, that people are back there riding motorcycles and different, I, I, I don't believe that. And if you look at the land, you don't, you wouldn't believe that anybody's going back there, other than people who have a legitimate use for that particular parcel. So I, I concur with your sentiment.
So are we going to look into that?
Well, we don't know. It takes more than you and I, and no one else has spoken to the issue.
Okay.
Do we have other easements down that way?
I can't answer that.
It depends on what you all, as a commission, want. Staff has been looking at other opportunities, provide full-fledged access for that area. But I, even if we were to provide access, I don't think a percentage of individuals care to be...
I'd like to go see.
I'd like to go and see the property first.
I would like to go too.
It was before my time, too.
And I recommend that you, a lot of people who...
And go meet with the staff that's out there, I mean, the residents that are out there.
I do recommend that.
Okay.
Because you have to have form of, you know, an opinion, based on what the, what it really looks like from their perspective, as well as from your perspective as a person who might look at that and say, oh, I should have given that to these people for their, and now they can just regulate who can have access to.
Right, yes.
In, in the meantime, if you'd like, I can come up with some cost estimates as to legal fees and, and expert costs. We can get some ideas to the property value, perhaps, and at least give you an outside limit for the cost to proceed with eminent domain.
I would like that, yeah. Okay. Okay. Mr. Strickland, you have another comment?
I do, and since I got everybody, did you want to say something, Mr. Manager?
Getting ready to write.
Okay. I, now that I got everybody all ruffled at me, I'm on, I'm going, I'm going to touch the third rail. Could we consider, as a body, making like an hour time limit, like say the county has, and put citizen comments an hour as a limit, hopefully not that long every time, to do public comments rather than at the end? I mean, tonight's not bad, it's 8:30, but most citizens don't want to come here, sit through all the stuff we do, and stay till nine, 9:30, 10 o'clock on a Wednesday night.
Well, I've got to be here, I know I'm elected, but I, I think the business of the city is important.
I do too. And I think also that they should be allowed to comment on our business beforehand, rather than after the fact.
And they can comment, well, that's on the consent agenda.
Right.
No matters on the consent agenda. And it, it was that way before, it was at the beginning. And, and I'm not, it doesn't trouble me if it's at the beginning or at the end, it doesn't trouble me. But I do think that there is some value to saying to a resident that, that, you know, there, there's nothing wrong with having to wait either. I don't know that there's a, you know, but unless a person feels as though they're not being heard on certain items, what wouldn't they be heard on? Because if it's on first read, if it's on second reading, they can speak to the issue. So you're never, you're never not allowing someone...
Oh, I, I know we're not, not allowing them, I'm just, I'm just saying we could probably get more people to show up if we, if they didn't have to stay here till the end of the night, which would be more fair to our residents, if we truly want to know what the heck they think.
I guess that part of the argument I don't really like, because I, I just feel as though, staying here to the end of the night, what's, what's the difference? Because you have some people watching on TV, then they get in their car and they just drive down here, when they know that it's their time. So, but at any rate, whatever y'all's pleasure is, I'm, I'm okay with it, so y'all tell me what you think.
They're not looking real happy over there on the other side.
Probably not. Probably not, because a lot of times, you know, populist perspectives don't always go well with the people who are seated. Go ahead.
I'm through.
All right.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Oh. Commissioner May?
So I only have one question for everybody. Is there any desire to have a presentation put forth about a small footprint home? There's somebody interested, and they've done it before in different places, they have an interest to do some in Daytona Beach, or at least present us with what zoning would be required, any issues they've run into, an opportunity to ask us questions about whether or not it's something we want to pursue, given that they've done it in other parts of Florida specifically. But the question is, is that something that you would like to have a presentation on? They sent me the email today.
Just like the little tiny house you brought for us to walk through?
Exactly that, exactly that preparation.
I've been in that tiny house for two or three years. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
So if that's a yes, if we could get that on the agenda at some point, they're quite eager?
Forward the information to Letitia, and she'll coordinate with them.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Ken, too?
I actually don't have anything. I'm just fair warning you, I probably will have a lot next commission meeting.
That makes two of us.
May I take hers?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to remind everybody that the Book Fresh Book Festival starts fresh, I always mess that up. Fresh Book Festival starts tomorrow with the video at our Peabody, and then on Friday, the authors will be in place. This is all at Midtown. Come out and buy some books, come out and check out the authors. On Saturday, Mayor, you're opening up, First Lady Henry is making a presentation and being recognized for what she did over the summer. So please come out and support that. This is the 11th year of the Fresh Book Festival, and we are the proud sponsors of that event. And it is growing, 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 and it is now international. It actually went international last year because of the pandemic. We shared with the London Book Festival, and so it's very exciting, so get involved.
Mayor, are you going to talk about the COVID-19 test kits tomorrow?
Uh, no, I do not have that. Do you have it?
Yes. Family Health Source will be giving away free QuickView Home COVID-19 Testing Kits tomorrow between 9:00 and 3:00, and until supplies last. And the drive-through, there'll be a drive-through, and it will be at 310 Gene Street, Daytona Beach, and it's the parking lot across from the old DMV.
Yeah, okay. I, too, will have a lengthy presentation for the next meeting. I'll try not to go too long, so I'll be very short tonight. Very excited about the Fresh Book Festival on Saturday, as Commissioner Reed stated. As the tag-along author of one of my wife's books, and which I'm just a tag-along, I will also be a tag-along presenter this Saturday at, at the opening, along with our children. So we're very excited about sharing our family's love of literacy and our commitment to literacy as it relates to children's books, and as it relates to teaching children how to read. And she has two educational applications that will soon be launched, that engage kids through reading and math. So we are excited to present, you know, our, our books and our love of literacy. You know, I don't know how much my children love it, but they, they learn to love it if you read to them. And that is the whole point of literacy. If you just continue to read to them, they learn to love literacy. And I think as a community, there's probably nothing that we can embrace that's more important for our children as a community than literacy. How can we find ways to inculcate that love? And it will, it takes kids to another level. So we're excited and appreciative of Donna Banks and everyone who's involved, and our city's partnership, this has grown into something that we should be just more than proud of. We should, as a community, just jump all over and encourage everyone to be a part of it. And so I look forward to it. Commissioner?
Sorry, I appreciate that. I was just getting your thinking about Beach Street for a second, and an aside, are you finished with all of yours?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. As an aside, could we please find out if they're, maybe we are, are we planning on putting cameras on poles or anything in that area as part of a, a crime prevention type thing, since we're going to have residents down there on the Beach Street North section? Are we planning on that?
I think there are some already there.
Okay, all right, thanks, sorry.
Yeah, they got some real cameras down there in that area, I can tell you.
I'm sorry about that?
They have some really, you know, they're, they're, yeah, they have some really nice cameras in that area.
All the way.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, okay. This portion of our meeting is concluded. We will now hear from our city manager, if he has anything.
Yes. The mayor of state of the city is next, January the 19th, at 5:15 PM. That is not part of his plethora of information he will make at the end of the commission meeting. But, so, we're asking for all the commissioners to be here at 5:15 for the required charter state of the city, and it will be here in these chambers at 5:15. Also, in February, you all receive your packet in reference to the rec center discussion here on Orange Avenue. We will be bringing that information back to you all to decide, how do we move forward for the rec center in February? We have stated that's when it will come forward. Potential dates for a retreat, we got different dates from everyone, so I wanted to figure out if February the 5th, 12th, or 26th is the preferred day for a retreat on a Saturday.
When is Speed Weeks?
It's not part of the Speed Week.
No, no, but I mean, the traffic is generally a little bit accelerated when there is Speed Weeks.
Yeah, we, we're not doing it around Speed Week, so what was that date that we, we made sure, I think it's, we didn't do it around that.
What, the 5th, the 12th, and the...
John, did you, now, what's Race Week?
Third weekend.
Second week.
February.
Third weekend in February.
Which is 19th and 19th.
And, and that's why we skipped over that, I think. So we did the 5th, the 12th, and the 26th.
February 5th, I cannot do, and I have mandatory meetings.
So we had the 12th and the 26th. Can everyone do the 26th? It's a Saturday?
I'll make it happen.
We will feed you breakfast and lunch?
Just make sure it's not dinner also, please.
Well, we've been to dinner with some people here. Commissioner Kent, who likes good dinners, and I...
As long as you have potato skins.
Potato skins, if I can find them, I'll just give her potato skins. I never knew somebody that wanted potato skins every day. Yeah. So February 26th will be the retreat date, it will be an all-day retreat on the Saturday. We will provide you with the location and also provide the information to the citizens who may want to come in and out. Also, to follow up with, Commissioner Traeger just stated, on December the 21st, I sent out our, our grant writer and staff. We are currently looking at how we can get a trolley and a water taxi within our community through some grants that we've located, to be able to acquire a trolley and a water taxi for our community. So that's something staff is working on.
Hold it. A water taxi, do we have, is it the water taxi? Because you remember, we went on a tour, and I, and I...
I know.
Okay.
Go, go ahead.
All right, well, I'll, I'll just leave it alone.
No, no, the mayor went on a, a tour, because he's been trying to get the, the water taxi. Well, when you have grant writers that believe that you can bring a floating dock all the way out beyond the scope of where you were looking at, when they say we can't, we, we decided to let them keep doing the work, since our grant writer gets charged a fee that's normal, it's no need, if, if she gets charged that fee every month, let her go and research how you can get your, your floating dock out beyond where the...
Where the, where the, where it's too, where it doesn't need to be dredged.
Correct. And our goal is, how do we get something down the entire Halifax River?
I'm very impressed by the staff, and you guys continuing to push through with that. That's been, since you first came, and, okay, good, good job.
So I, I appreciate that we're moving forward on some more water projects. I think it's great. Are we cleaning up more of the river than also, do we have more money for that, too?
We're, we're looking at that, one of the things that I think Mr. Morris may be in the back, but him and Glenn and I are, oh, yeah, good. We're going to be meeting soon for our, our marine unit to look at some of the things, so we can clean up our, our water front, some of the docks, some of the boats. But also, Drew Driscoll is also looking at something that connects with our fire boat as well. So those are things that we're looking towards, and we're trying to find grant opportunities to make it easy for that sale to take place to you all as elected officials. And once I found out our grant writer, no matter if she talks to one person or 100 people, I put her on every grant that I can think of.
Thank you. Can I, can I say something? Can you see about getting a grant writer for the rec center? Now, the Historic Preservation Board, they did pass a resolution to make it a historic site for Daytona Beach. I don't remember if it ever came before the city commission here, but I think it would be easier to get a grant if you were, if we were declared, or the, the rec center was declared a historic site, which it has, I mean, World War II, et cetera, et cetera. And then you might be able to get historic grants, echo grants, maybe racing and rec grants, maybe some other historic grants from the state or something.
All of those discussions will be part of our discussion, that's to let you all know what can, if you decide that you want to keep the facility, what grants are available, what funds are available, or if not. So during our workshop, we'll make sure that we lay out all the, the potential grants that could go towards historic preservation for that facility.
I'm just wondering if we need to have an agenda item to declare it a Daytona Beach historic site before that? That might make us eligible for more grants.
Well, we're, we're going to, we'll bring all the potentials, we, grants take a while, so it's going to be in February. And so if, if you all decide that you want to keep moving forward with that facility, I think you will bring it forward, and then we will start looking at bringing grants to you all.
Okay. But like I said, I think there might be more grants available, if it was already discored, just designated a historic site.
Okay. All right, we, we, we'll hear from residents at this time.
Okay. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Bob Brains, he might have left. On deck is Lee Kinsner.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach, Beachside. One, publicly, I would hate to agree with such a liberal as Ken, but I do agree that we have to buy back that property. You make mistakes, it happens. Unfortunately, I was in the library during that time. As you remember, the mics didn't work, your little things for reading, you can't read them because they don't make any sense, but we didn't know what was going on out there. So we need to look at all access on the river. I'm asking you to specifically look at ISB, as a walkway underneath it, before that development comes in, also under the Seabreeze Bridge. We do have access at, at Collins, there's a little, you could put a little ramp there, but there's possibility there. Secondly, on your discussion on how much land is left on LPGA for development and what you're doing out there, if you, again, visually look, coming from Tandrel and while going over the, the bridge, everything... the, the bridge, everything to the left on LPGA is spoken for. It can be, you can't add anything else. Everything's already developed or, or being developed. On the right-hand side, there's Margaritaville, Tandrel, Avalon, Mosaic, Bayberry, and you just approved to within 1,000 feet or so of ISB. So everything out there is already done. The damage is done. The question is, what land is available for future? If you look going out ISB, there's very little land between ISB and I-4 redeveloped. Once you get past LPGA, it's county land for most of that. That little bit just past I-4, there's a development already going in. So take a look at what's available coming in, what you're experiencing at LPGA won't experience somewhere else, especially Williamson. At your area, there's a lot of space left. All right? So years ago, I suggested that we expand LPGA and the commission said, no, there was no need for it. 2049 was early enough, didn't come out that way. ISB is the next target. I already talked about the county. That bridge, as soon as you go past I-95, is too narrow. You can't even walk across it. There's no space to walk. We need to widen that because if LPGA is done, that area between ISB and I-4 is the only thing that's coming in next. I'm asking you to take a look at that. Also, on Beachside, we are developing our fourth four-star hotel as we speak. There's talk that Hilton would be a four-star. That's five four-star hotels. The houses around me are in the $600,000. I'm in the bad part of Beachside. That bad part everybody always talks about? I live there. In the $600,000 figures. We need to start looking at what we own there.
Thank you, John.
And clean it.
Our next speaker is Lee Kinsner and on deck is Randy Gray. You can just leave them there. Give them to her. Okay. And we'll put them in their mailboxes.
Hi, my name's Lee Kinsner. I live at 2318 South Peninsula Drive and I think you all remember me from before and I appreciate tonight's meeting. Commissioner Strickland, thanks for coming out and looking at that. Ladies, if you'd like to come out, I'd be glad to walk down the street. My house is 150 yards from the property that we're talking about. I've left you a, a copy of some of the things that I've spoken to the mayor and Commissioner Strickland and Commissioner May about. And then on that, I've highlighted it for you to get your attention to it. And Mr. City Manager and Mr. Jagger, on page three, there are certain things that are supposed to be done when a right-of-way is done, and I don't think that they were done on that. So I don't know if that helps out in a way of approaching the owners of the property, the current owners of the property. And I had this big speech filled out and ready to go tonight, but I'm going to wait until after all you all come and take a look at it and we'll do it again. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Happy New Year.
Okay. Our next speaker is Randy Gray and on deck is Frederick Brown.
My name is Randy Gray. I live at 2301 South Halifax Drive and I'm also here to speak on the River Approach. And, you know, I had all this stuff written down and kind of took, took the words from me here. A couple of things, I encourage everybody to come down and see that because the sunsets there are amazing and a lot of people use that for the sunsets. No wires in, in your way. It's just, it's, it's priceless. And, and then, you know, we talk about putting a price on, well, I'll do a cost analysis. There's no price on the right thing. We all know that. You know, you can't, you can't put a price on that. That, that, that kind of stuff's priceless. And, you know, even us at Bridgeport Heights that have access to it, I mean, one of the owners has a German shepherd that runs loose and he has the right. He owns that property. But I'm not going down there. I've had a bad experience. I, I, I'm not going to go down there and use that because of that. I have that fear factor. So, you know, in that case, I'm not going to take myself or my grandchildren down there to visit the site because, I mean, it wouldn't be, I just don't think it's a, a smart thing for me to do. You know, we talked last meeting about parking. When the city repaved that, they paved between the sidewalk and the street two extra parking spots for people to park and walk down to the river. That was done for that purpose. And also, and, and this is from people that's lived there for 30 years, there used to be a sign on Peninsula and Halifax that had the canoe launch. And I don't know whether it, it, it came up missing a couple of times and I don't know whether somebody's in it for the man cave sign or somebody just didn't want people using that as a canoe launch, but that thing came up missing and after a couple of times, it never got replaced. But there was, there was one up there. And so, you know, with that being said, I, I just, I want to thank everybody involved because truly, it's a blessing to have access to that, you know? I mean, we're all blessed to be in a nice city like Daytona Beach and we appreciate you all. Okay? These, and also, all these, this one, I carried this all the way up and I wasn't going to bring it, but since I carried it from the car, these are all signatures from, from our zone, Zone One, of people that are real, were really upset that it was given away to begin with. So, you know, I just want you to know how everybody in our zone feels about it, not just myself and Lee and Rick Brown. So.
If you want those to be in the record for the meeting.
We, we have sent the names.
Okay.
You, you guys have those and, and you've gotten them a few months back, but I've got the originals right here. All right? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Jim Sweeney.
First of all, happy new year to all the commission. And I want to personally thank Commissioner May, Commissioner Strickland, and of course, Mayor Henry for coming down to visit the public land that was given away. Again, my name is Frederick Brown, 1508 Cresta Ridge. I'm on the Beachside. It's the only access that I would have to the river anywhere near me. Unfortunately, if you remember, just a little while ago, we had the Walk to the Park Day. Well, there was no way. I had to drive to the nearest park. And I'm going to be working with the Director of Leisure Services on trying to get that improved, so we'll see how that goes. In addition to that, this should be considered the property there that was given away. Well, let's get some of the facts out. And I know I've stated them before, but for clarity, I know Commissioner Strickland wasn't here, the city, new city manager, Mr. Fietzer was not here. And to refresh the others that don't remember, this whole thing was started by one of the two residents on either side. The application was placed with a particular law firm in town who seems to have a great deal of pull with this city. And when they filled out the application, there was a great, a great deal of falsity in the application. The other thing, Mayor Henry, you stated, you rely on staff to do the research. You have hundreds of these properties to deal with. This whole thing was done back when we were excluded from the meeting, so nobody knew about it. There was no public notification of it. It was not posted, as it says in the notes, which you have copies of that. Hopefully, all of you will review this so that you understand the facts of what happened. This thing was slid under the cover of COVID, pushed by a law firm who is now trying to convince the owners, no, you don't want to give it back. That's because they were paid to take it. And you need to understand the motive for the taking of that land. It seems that the former mayor's son, who owned that property, who initiated this, wanted to sell his property. He wanted to embellish the cost and indeed he did. He sold it for $770,000 for a relatively small part of it, but he promised the buyer, don't worry, you're going to get this piece of land as part of the deal. Why? Because he had contacted that particular law firm and put this application with all of its falsities in it. Now, the only fault that I see the city did, if you, once you read all these comments in here that have been provided for you, and I urge all of you to read this, okay? Because this is just one of many things that can happen in this city when you just go, oh, check mark, check mark, check mark. But you need to read what actually transpired. What's wrong with that application? All the falsities in it. We don't owe a thing on that land. That application should be rejected on its falsity and now the facts are out. If nothing further, we might even consider suing the firm that presented it, knowing that it was false facts. That's the important thing you need to understand. Okay? Because I've heard too many facts. There were not facts. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Sweeney and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
How y'all doing? Jim Sweeney, 20 North Halifax Avenue, own the property. It's just about 200 feet north of Main Street and I'm just here to plant a seed. I don't know the procedural stuff, so I apologize, but I wanted to discuss a zoning change for that Main Street corridor or Beachside between the bridges, whatever the community decides to do. But right now, it's currently zoned RP, Residential Professional. So you're allowed to have office use. My real estate appraisal office is in that building, but it's a big house, you know? Friends and family program that they come visit me from up north, they stay there and we have friends come in, but we're not allowed to rent it out. So I, I would love extra income of doing Airbnb and that's an area where I think it would be conducive to that. The requested zoning, I guess you dealt with this two weeks ago with that property that was half and half. It's zoned RDB3, redevelopment, Beachside Gateway Residential. And with that, the purpose, according to our land uses, the purpose of redevelopment, Beachside Gateway Residential mixed use, this district is to establish an attractive gateway to the Main Street and Main Street redevelopment area by taking advantage of its waterfront location and encourage, encouraging waterfront uses to generate pedestrian traffic within the Main Street area, to anchor west end of Main Street redevelopment area with major use, mixed developments, and associated neighborhood retail activities, and to allow a mixture of intensive commercial and residential land uses in a manner that promotes an improved, safe, attractive atmosphere for residents and visitors to the area. So just, I want you to focus on generate pedestrian tract, traffic and attractive atmosphere for residents and visitors. I'm at my office every day kind of looking out on Halifax from my desk. I have blinds kind of tilted just so I can see outside. It, it's not attractive what comes by. Our pedestrians aren't that attractive pedestrians. We, we, we need more attractive pedestrians in the area. But what I'm trying to say is, let's encourage investment and renovation of that area, okay? And let's connect it to where this great framework project went in. Great job, by the way, with that. I was here for that two weeks ago. Let's make this a downtown area connecting all the walkable ecotourism that it should be. I moved to Daytona 30 years ago, circled it along with Daytona Beach and Miami. I circled on a map when I graduated from college saying, I'm never living there. Now here I am 30 years later going, I never want to leave. I love it here and I think y'all do a great job. And I'm just, I've been there since 2005 and it's blight and nothing's changed and I'm for discussion. So if we have to go before the planning board, if someone could include me in on it, I just want to help and help us go in the right direction.
What was his name?
Jim Sweeney.
Jim Sweeney.
And he doesn't contact him.
We have.
Okay. Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Marjorie Johnson on 22 South Key Street. I went to City Hall Library and that pavilion up there had been closed down and locked off from the public, which is a disgrace ever since you took office. Eric Henry, Paul, and some of the rest up here and also, and Hendry. We need to get that pavilion open to the public. You say you closed it off because of the homeless, but we've had homeless people for years and we've had access to that pavilion. And I went up here and it was chained off and bird crap all over the place. And while I was up there examining it, I heard someone call my name. So when I went back the next day, they had taken the chain off and they had cleaned the bird crap that had been sitting there for years. We want that pavilion open to the public. It was a violation and discriminatory for you to close that pavilion off. We need to have access to it on a daily basis and I would like to get it open again and that other part over there fixed. It needs to be fixed so we can have access to it. So I also am here tonight to talk about the public property that needs to be returned to the citizens of this community. It was a huge mistake to give away our public land and I was not pleased when I heard about it because you did it while we didn't have access to City Hall and you should have investigated all this because you didn't pay to do your job before you gave away our property. I wouldn't want anyone to give my public, my property away without my permission. So we need you to get on that. I want to commend Commissioner Ken Strickland for the outstanding job he's doing, bringing this to your attention for the remarks that he made tonight because that was wrong for you to do that. Also, on Maple Street over there, Commissioner, read your zone. You need to go down there past Ms. Rivers' house, trash all over the place. They condemned the house, but you need to go down there and make sure that place is cleaned up. It's in terrible condition. They got trash all out and Ms. Rivers, I saw her at Publix and she complained to me about it. So I told her I would bring it to the attention of the commission because I'm down there on a regular basis and, and all of the residents over there, I was sick and tired of, tired of all of that trash just out there. Also, I would like for you to go up there and pave the street in front of Bethune-Cupman University. When you pave the other side, you should have finished it. You're going down there to pave the one in front of Brown and Brown. You need to pave Bethune-Cupman University.
And our next speaker is Ann Ruby.
And who's after Ann?
No one.
Ann is the final speaker.
Unless someone slips one in.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. Thank you for the median strip. I think you, aesthetically, you will love it. It's going to be great. So thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you. I'm wondering when, there were two murals that came up on MMB. Well, they went, they've gone through the old process. I know you're proposing a new process, Get Developed, for your murals for the Arts Council, but these guys went through the old process. They were approved quite a few months ago. There was a mural on the side of the Midtown Cafe that was approved by the Midtown Redevelopment Board and one on Fifi's Hair Salon that was approved by the Downtown Redevelopment Board. And those, according to what I've heard, are ready to be painted. They're just looking for funding. And I don't, is there any way, it's about a total investment of about $15,000. Is there any way they could get kicked off sooner rather than later, rather than waiting to form an arts board? I'm just looking forward for information on that.
Yes, they will be moving forward. The, the problem that we are having that they were approved for the board, but there was no funding set aside. So staff over the next week is trying to set aside the appropriate funding to go up to what was, what will be the needs of the artists. So they will be contacting artists because they were approved, but the only thing was that money was not set aside through the approval. But we plan on speaking with, Drew and I met on, not yesterday, maybe the day before, and we're going to be bringing something back to the commission, but we think we have the funds for those that have already been approved. But that was the only hiccup that there has not been set aside funds for just particular, those particular murals, but we're going to be able to do them.
Okay, but you're on the case, which is great.
Yes.
So thank you. In terms of development, a workshop on developments, maybe you could look at different, look at the, each parcel and, and categorize them. What's developed? What's permitted or under, you know, PD but is not built? What date? How, how many years do they have until that has to be built? What's in discussion? What's in the pipeline now that you haven't seen, but staff is engaged in discussion? What's come in? People have just come in and made an inquiry. What land is underdeveloped, is, is not developed but is available for development? What land is, what parcels are unavailable for development because the land is not good enough for some reason? What lands belong to the city for parks, schools? I think if you developed a parcel-by-parcel map, and I think your, your GIS department has the capability of doing that, it would be a visual that could be maintained and would be very useful in the future.
Excuse, have you been talking to Commissioner May?
He can say my name.
No. No, I have not been talking to Commissioner May. I've been asking for a map like this for a while. So, so I just wanted to, if you're going to have that workshop, it might be worth expanding what you're asking them to list, not just what's developed. what you're asking them to list, not just what's developed and what's under agreement. On the trolley, I'm excited to hear you thinking about that. I had a dinner with ladies who lunch, you know, they live in Ormond and Daytona Beach shores. I told them about the trolley idea that would be free with the beachside loop. They got very excited, so I think there really is ridership for that trolley.
You said, free?
Yeah, free. No, like the one, I, I sent everybody an email on that, free. They, they do it in, they do it in Manatee County, and it's been running for years. They have 500,000 people a, a year doing that. That's 1,400 people moving around every, every week, just moving around the city. We, we could use that. It would really bring business. And then, on the rec center, oh, I'm going to run out of time. When is that workshop? Please.
Oh, I'm going to need to be the first meeting in February, the second meeting in February.
Okay, could I do a presentation on the history of the rec center? I'll ask you later. Thank you. Bye. Good night. Happy New Year.
Alright, Happy New Year.
Speaker?
Good night, Daytona Beach. Make it a great evening.